Lights are hot, five seconds. You're live.
Hi, welcome everyone to the Auburn School Committee meeting for June 4th, 2025. This meeting of the Town of Auburn School Committee is being conducted in person and is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. All are welcome to join us in person here at 5 West Street. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body is available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Thank you. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. A lot of cute faces in the crowd tonight, today. It's not even night yet. Turn it over to you, Dr., yeah, Dr. McCullough.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment, we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
All right, thank you. And do we have anyone here for citizens' comments tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the first item is the Auburn Municipal Scholarship recipient. This year, the Auburn Municipal Scholarship Committee is pleased to announce that its 13th annual scholarship in the amount of $1,000 has been awarded to Julia Ruko, an Auburn High School senior who will be attending Boston University in the fall to study biology on a pre-med track. While all applicants were worthy, Julia's application stood out and was selected based on the following criteria: scholastic record, high moral character, exceptional extracurricular activities, participation and leadership in extracurricular activities, strong community involvement, and a need for financial assistance. The municipal scholarship fund is available to be awarded due to the generosity of Auburn taxpayers. It is derived from donations made by Auburn residents on their quarterly real estate tax bills. All funds raised go directly to Auburn graduates who meet the criteria established by the committee and in keeping with MGL Chapter 60, Section 3C. Residents are encouraged to consider making a contribution via an upcoming tax bill so that the municipal scholarship committee can continue to be awarded, award the scholarship annually. So yes, excellent candidates this year. We had a lot of, there was a lot of discussion, but Julia certainly stood out among the rest, so we're happy for her.
Great, congratulations to her.
And along that same line, the Auburn Chamber of Commerce Scholarship recipients, again, they are so, so generous. So six of our seniors received scholarships in the amount of $1,500. I won't read all of their bios, but I'm going to tell you, it was an impressive bunch, and some of them couldn't even be at the scholarship breakfast. Their parents had to be there for them because they were taking AP tests at the time of the breakfast, so they were still right to the very end pushing along. So Maeve Whittimore, Abigail Belanger, Julia Rocheford, Chloe Chang, Carly Beemendorfer, and Julia Ruko all received scholarships. It was a great breakfast held at the Elks. Mr. DeLongchamp and I were present, and it's really inspiring to see that these are the kids that'll be our leaders someday, so it was an awesome, awesome event.
That's great. Congrats to all of them. That's wonderful. All right, let's seek approval of the minutes from May 21st, 2025.
I'll make a, you got it. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May 21st, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. We do not have student reps because they have graduated and moved on, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and again, we begin with our student spotlight. This evening, we have some students from Packard Chog School to talk about Empowering Writers with Mrs. Dunn and Ms. Gittar, and so I'll have them all come up and we can introduce and get started. Thank you all for coming.
Do I need to do this now?
You can move it down. Yep, yep.
This year, excuse me, this year, the district purchased a new writing program called Empowering Writers. Four second grade students have come today to share some bits and pieces of the program that we've tried prior to rolling it out in full next fall. Those students are Joshua Erhardic from my classroom, Maxie Van Nesswells from Mrs. Dunn's class, Willa Falcone from Mrs. D Hall's class, and Jackson Shanahan from Mrs. Lemire's class. The three sections that we are going to talk briefly about are Sentence of the Day, which has a fun twist on Fridays, as well as the literacy launch and informational text writing.
The first section I will talk about is Sentence of the Day. Each day, Monday through Thursday, our teacher reads us a short passage. At the end of the passage, there's a question about what she has read to us. We brainstorm possible sentences that answer the question. Then our teacher puts the words for the actual sentence scrambled on the board. And it is our job to figure out the sentence that is in the book. After we write the sentence, we color code it. The capital letter on the first word and the punctuation is colored in blue, and then we underline the subject in red and the predicate in green. Then on Friday, there's a twist. This is called Free For All Friday. On this day, our teacher finishes the story that she has read to us all week. However, there isn't a specific sentence that we have to write. We come up with a sentence that incorporates the skills we have been practicing all week, such as contract, contractions, pronouns, and past tense verbs. Last, last weekend, draw in color a picture to match our sentence. Empowering Writers begins with a literacy launch. Some of the activities we tried were determining the difference between narrative and informational text. For example, we read a frog and toad story in a nonfiction text about frogs. We had to determine which one was narrative and which one was informational. For the narrative, we drew a cover that matched what happened in the story, and for the informational text, we used photographs. Finally, to prepare us for third grade and doing more informational writing, we practiced organizing main ideas and details, coming up with our own main ideas. We also practiced using word reference to improve our writing. A word reference example would be instead of writing tiger, we could use words like ferocious beast, striped jungle animal, or carnivore.
These are just a few highlights of the program that we have tried this year. We look forward to digging deeper into Empowering Writers next fall.
Nice job.
Very good. Very talented.
Shout out to Maxie, it's her birthday.
Oh, happy birthday!
Birthday, Maxie.
That was wonderful, thank you so much. I do have a question, who drew the picture of Marco and that?
That was somebody from my class.
Oh, okay, all right, I didn't know if it was anyone here. It was very well done. So any questions or comments from?
What would you say is your favorite part of this program?
I liked how we all got our own parts, and we all got to share a little bit of what we've done through this year.
I think the question is what part of writing do you like? Does everybody have a favorite part of writing?
I like that in writing, there's different ways to write.
And each classroom has dabbled in different parts of it, as we're just kind of experiencing it, and the second grade team has a chance at our PLCs to kind of get together and say, what did you do with your class? Which part of the program did you do with yours? What worked? What could we maybe tweak a little bit? So it's all, we're all starting out together on the same foot for next year, but it was nice to at least see what some of the parts of the program were, and they did a nice job embracing it for the short time we've had it.
And then we're going to work with them tomorrow for summer to kind of get things ready for the fall, so that when we roll it out, we can.
Yeah, awesome. Through the chair, I like the interdisciplinary piece, like there's the writing, there's the coloring, it's a little bit of everything, so you can definitely ascertain whether or not they understand what they're reading, so that's cool.
Madam Chair, I'm curious about the Sentence of the Day. Do you think that that helps you when you go to do your own writing? How does it help you?
It helps us remember to use a punctuation, and it also helps us do a capital letter of the first, the first word of the sentence.
And what do we call that? What do we look for, our what? Our two finger?
Two finger touch.
Ah, nice, excellent, excellent. Nicely done.
Yeah, very good. A lot of great speakers there.
Yeah. I think we could have them shake hands. I think you guys could come up and just shake our hands so we can thank you for coming, okay?
They brought their A-game for the birthday.
Yeah, birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you so much for being here, good job, happy birthday.
Excellent job. Send over some of your writing samples sometime so we can read them. Thank you, thank you for coming. Nicely done.
Great job.
Ms. Dunn and Ms. Carlson, thank you for coming tonight. This is always like the best part of our meeting, and then we have to get down to business.
Then everybody leaves.
And you are all free to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
But you can stay.
Yeah, you can if you want.
Have a good one.
Bye.
Thank you, thanks for coming. Thanks, everyone, nice job. Great job, everyone. Nicely done. Happy birthday, one more time.
Happy birthday. That was great. Second grade.
Yeah, I know, right? Smart kids.
I don't know if I could read in the second grade. Like, I'm trying to go back, I'm like, I must have been able to, but.
All right, we're gonna kind of jump around a little bit here, and we're gonna move down to new business with the field trips.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Fidella is here with us this evening. She'd like to come up to the podium, she could tell us a little bit about the trip, trips, I should say, trips. You can move that back up onto the, yeah, there you go.
I don't know how to follow that. I know. That is one tough follow, and what an amazing demonstration for us right there. I don't think in second grade I knew anything about narrative nor informational text, so who knows? What a great presentation. So first, I'm here to thank the committee and Dr. Chamberlain and Mr. Keller for supporting our trip to Paris, Madrid, 2025, and being able to help our students experience their French and their Spanish in a cultural context, and through some of the pictures we'll take a look at together, I hope you can see how much they're embracing their time in Paris, Versailles, Madrid, Segovia, and Toledo. So here we are, Ojevois Auburn, we are leaving. Everyone's happy and smiling, and this is probably the most refreshed and not tired they'll be for the next nine days. And interesting thing with that overnight flight, we arrive at 8:00 AM in the morning the next day, on the 19th, and we drop our bags at the hotel and we go right to the Eiffel Tower. So they're getting sort of that Parisian experience right away, so you can see some of us waiting in line. You actually wait in line underneath on the right, so you're looking up inside the tower, and a few of us are on top, and then on the way there. We were extremely lucky to take a bunch of students who wanted to out in the evening, it was a little bit rainy out, but we got to experience an Easter vigil mass outside of the newly renovated Notre Dame, and they held just the beginning of the mass outside, and then the longer components, the readings and stuff, were held inside, and we were not allowed in. But it was a really beautiful moment for a lot of our students who wanted to experience that. And then the next morning, we took a trip to the Jardin de Luxembourg, and you can see a very familiar figure in the middle there, that's the mini version of the Statue of Liberty before that French artist created the larger version that we have here in New York City. And then we were on to the Louvre in the afternoon, there's the famous glass pyramid that everybody really despised when it first arrived on site, and now it's such an iconic piece of Parisian architecture. And we're inside the Louvre here on the left, of course, we have some Egyptian art. On the right, we have the famous Venus de Milo. In the middle, we have a very famous lady that the students are always very surprised how tiny she is, the Mona Lisa, and that's about as close as you can get with all the tourists, and she is encased in bulletproof glass. And that evening, we journeyed to Montmartre, which is a very beautiful artisan neighborhood on top of the hill, and we have some photos from daytime, and we were there into the evenings, the students got to enjoy that as well. And on day three, we were back in the gardens and they were playing pétanque, so this is kind of an active part of the trip. The easiest way I can describe it is it's sort of like bocci or boule, if you've played that in the backyard, but we had a special bonus where we got lessons from the champion of pétanque, Olympic national champion, whatever, of pétanque, and the kids really enjoyed that, so they got into small groups and kept score and played pétanque against one another. And in the bottom right, you see Dr. LeBeau and Señor Kramer had the winning team. They got bragging rights. The next day, it was off to the Palais de Versailles, and we got to tour the inside of the palace, and then on the right, as you can see, we had, through the company, rented bicycles, and the students could pedal all around the gardens and actually get to pedal out to the hamlet where Marie Antoinette famously painted her sheep because she wanted to play shepherdess and enjoy what it was like to be sort of a regular person. So if the students wanted, they could have toured the inside of that as well. And finally, that afternoon, believe it or not, there really is no rest here. We were in Madrid by that afternoon, so this is the Plaza Mayor, and it's sort of the main hub in Madrid, and lots of shops, souvenirs, restaurants, where it was sort of our meeting place in most instances. And then they got to have their flamenco lesson, so nobody was too shy, nobody held back. We had two amazing instructors who taught our students how to flamenco. I do have video if anyone wants to see that. And then the next morning, we did a little trip out to Toledo, which is known for their Damascus steel, so we stopped at a steel sword-making factory first, and then we toured, there's a very beautiful cathedral on the right, and then on the left, you can see, we had a cooking lesson, so we learned how to make basically an appetizer, a main dish, and a dessert, and we all ate that as well. There's that inside of the cathedral that I mentioned, and one of our students was at the omelet flipping station. Big responsibility. And the next day brought us to Segovia, where they have some of the largest aqueducts that are still in working order on the left, and then there's no shortage of beautiful cathedrals and churches and synagogues and palaces, so that's just a group shot in front of one. And one last look at the aqueduct. And finally, our final ice cream back in Madrid, and that was it. So I don't know if anyone had any questions, but again, thank you, we had a really marvelous time, no issues, and I think my favorite part is that so many of the students who have been taking French all along now are interested in maybe looking into some Spanish courses that we offer and vice versa, just from experiencing the two countries, so I think that's just a benefit for us in our foreign language program at the high school.
Nice, great, awesome. Those pictures are great. It's like fun. Any questions?
Through the chair, I got to see a lot on Facebook.
Oh, yes.
Of all the parents kind of posting stuff, and it looked like it was so much fun, and every kid, every student looked so happy on this trip, so you put together a great trip.
Thank you, and you reminded me actually of one component I meant to mention, thank you. I had a WhatsApp sort of parent chain, and every evening, we would just make sure to update them with photos of sort of what we did during the day, and I do think that was sort of reassuring, and our parents enjoyed that. If they weren't so much into WhatsApp, I also had a texting chain for the parents and I, just in different groups, and I updated them that way, but I think that was an important component, and I'll continue to do that moving forward.
Did the students have access to Wi-Fi when they were on the trip?
They did, and some of them have data plans where, you know, they're able to do that internationally, and for the students, we had, we used something called GroupMe, which is through Microsoft, and it's just, it was for all the chaperones and all the students in one big group text, so if we ever had to change a meeting time or anything like that, we could alert people that way.
Through the chair, can we make a requirement that like, school committee members must attend trips?
A minimum of two.
I would love that, I would love that. Like, I think that should be, I think we should vote that in. Definitely.
Yep, no, those are a bunch of lucky kids.
Awesome.
And it looked like the weather was pretty much, for the most part, right where it needed to be.
Exactly, it was just, we had a sprinkle one evening in Paris at the Easter vigil, and then one of the days in Madrid, it just, it was threatening clouds, but it just rained a little bit, so not too bad. We also had a student on crutches, that was a first for me, and she was really a trooper. I mean, crutching around Paris and being in the metro and the subway, there's a lot of people, a lot of jostling around, and she was fabulous, and her friend who was assisting her as well, they were, I think they were the MVPs of the trip.
That's great.
That's great, yeah.
So while we're on a roll, I had two other field trips to propose for the school committee's approval. The first, I'm here on behalf of my friend and colleague, Elizabeth Dumay, and this is a trip very near and dear to my heart. I was lucky to inherit this trip from Jerry DeLongchamp. This is a trip to Quebec City in January 5th, in January of 2026, running from the 15th to the 18th, and this is a smaller trip, I feel that you get, as my friend Señor Kramer would say, a lot of bang for your buck. It's around $1,100, and the students have their transportation, hotel, admission, to everything covered. The only thing is two of the four days, they have to provide their own lunch, but everything else is provided for them in this trip. And going up in January might seem a little counterintuitive for those of us who might not love the cold, but it is such a unique experience to see the winter wonderland that is Quebec City in January. So it's right before the carnival, so they are starting to organize for carnival, so you might see some ice sculptures along the way, but I feel that they've really harnessed their gift of cold and snow and ice and sort of made it into a tourist attraction, so our students get to experience the Ice Hotel, which is a fully functioning hotel made of ice and snow. They get to do a little snow tubing, so it's a water park in the summer, and they turn it into a snow tubing park. And culturally, they get to take a look at different cathedrals, they go to the Plains of Abraham where several stories, they can hear about the battles there, and they get to walk around the fortified city and the old town, which has so much history there in terms of how the settlers came to Quebec City back in the 1600s, so really awesome trip. I love this trip, and I was happy to pass the reins to my friend because I know how much Mrs. Dumay loves Quebec City as well.
Any questions, Dr. Fidella?
No, no. I just had, through the chair, just one concern, because we have an unsteady world that we live in, this is still approval, and then you guys will have the opportunity should things shift, because we're talking about January, it's June, right? It's still, like, all of the safety precautions and whatnot are going to be.
We have a pretty extensive policy now, right? Would you agree with that?
Right.
That kind of cover all that, and certainly, as we got closer to this one, I was checking through the.
The USA, the organization.
Yeah, through the government, you can check on like the safety of travel and that kind of thing, which we'll continue to do.
Because I love this trip for the kids. Many of my friends' kids have gone on and now graduated, and they were like, highlight, 10 out of 10, I've never heard anything less. So I want that, but I also, I err on the side of caution in these wonderful times that we live in.
Absolutely, and a lot of our students and parents opt to purchase the trip insurance that, so this trip is through Jump Street Tours, and they provide extensive coverage. For example, if you were to purchase the ultimate packet, if something like that occurred where we were no longer able to safely travel per the school committee or per our USA.gov, the website that is recommending travel, a lot of students would receive their money back in full. It just depends which protection they decide to pay for, but typically, the insurance will give you different steps, and if you pay more, at least you get back more money there.
Great, good question. And we've always brought that up to you before, too, with the France trips, and you guys have always been great about that.
Yeah, great question.
All right, and you have one more for us?
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the trip to Quebec City as presented for January 15th, 2026 through January 18th, 2026.
I will second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All righty.
Now Costa Rica.
Yes, the final trip that I want to talk about tonight is to Costa Rica from April 17th, 2026 to April 25th, 2026, so it would be the Friday before April vacation until that second Saturday next year. So this trip is a bit more active. I think in Paris and Madrid, what Mr. Kramer and I were really hoping to emphasize was a lot of the architecture and the food culture and a lot of those different aspects of being in Europe, whereas Costa Rica can be a bit more active. Our students will certainly get to engage in their Spanish language skills, but they are doing very interesting activities such as walking through the Monte Verde rainforest, they'll be on a riverboat cruise throughout that rainforest as well. They'll meet with local students in San Carlos, so they'll get a chance to actually sit down in a school's cafeteria and chat with students there, which we did not have that opportunity, for example, in Paris and Madrid. They also are able to horseback ride if they choose to on their way to the Aranaud volcano. We don't go near the volcano or in the volcano or anything like that, but they get a pretty nice view. They also get to experience some hot springs if they like to, that comes, they come from the volcano. And overall, they'll be eating delicious fruits and vegetables and everything tropical that we have a hard time growing here, and it's a really lovely trip. My father was a teacher and vice principal at Shepherd Hill for 38 years, and I actually went on the trip with him when he was a vice principal, and it's, like I said, it's a very active trip, but it's really fun, and for our students specifically who are learning Spanish, it's always interesting to hear a different style of Spanish as well. So for me, having been taught Parisian French, for example, I love to go to Quebec City and hear a different style of French, so that would be really interesting for our students who are learning more Spanish from Spain, and to hear the Costa Rican Spanish would be very interesting as well.
Yes, and I believe this trip was supposed to happen, and then COVID happened.
Yes, yes. Remember the horseback riding. You're exactly right.
Yeah, so, and I definitely recommend that the students get that insurance plan, because a lot of kids lost it.
100%. So this would be through ACIS, so this is the company who ran our Paris, Madrid trip, and they are all about pushing the insurance, and I think for good reason, as you mentioned, on certain times, so I think it is in the best interest of everybody to buy that ultimate insurance package.
Looks like a very fun trip, something I definitely, it's on my bucket list. I won't go with you guys and crash the party, but I do want to get there.
Maybe we should pitch this to the tour company, because you never know.
Right.
I also want to say, so I was privileged enough to know Dr. Fidella's dad, I was his student, so we go way back with that, I ask about him all the time, so he thinks it was good, and it's good, so, yeah, great guy.
We had a great time, you know, how many times in your adult life do you get to like hang out with your dad in Costa Rica? So we had a great time.
That's awesome.
Wow, that's great. All right, any more questions or comments regarding this trip? All right, let's seek a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the trip to Costa Rica as presented for April 17th, 2026 through April 25th, 2026.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
Thank you, Dr. Fidel. That was excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and you are free to go. You did double duty.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
And come back with pictures like you did.
Yeah.
Have a good night. All right, we will shift back to unfinished business.
We could, we could probably open the door now. I think that would help. Do people need the air on now? It's just hard, it's hard to hear anybody, but we can put that on for a bit if we need it. Okay, okay, yeah.
I'm, I'm good. Now that there's just us, that's not, if it was a full house, I'd be like, we're gonna need some, you know. I mean, you can come sit next to me anyway, Mandy. I've got a seat right here for you. All right, so now we'll go back here.
Yep, now we'll go back to unfinished business, the new charge policy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a second read of this, and I am hoping, because we are so close to the end of the year, that I'm willing to answer any questions you may have. You'll see in the policy itself, the changes are really minimal to the policy, but we would like to get this approved for our food service department if anybody has any questions. And if not, if we could move forward.
Okay, any questions? No, I looked it over. It seems like everything.
Yeah, nothing, nothing earth shattering.
All right, so let's get that approved.
I make a motion to approve the updates made to the charge refund administration policy.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Likewise, this is the second read for the wellness policy. This is something else that we'll wanna, we normally have this in, available and sometimes in handbooks. And certainly with food services having undergone their audit this year, this is something we want to submit as, you know, done and dusted, right, that it's been signed off on. Again, I don't think there's, the biggest thing, and we talked about it today at a leadership meeting, is using food as a means of celebration, right? And they discourage that for, you know, back in the day, families would send in cupcakes for everybody's birthday or whatever that might be, and to find other ways to celebrate versus food. Or if there's gonna be a food celebration, to more so go through our food service department, who has the list of foods that are considered appropriate for those types of things. So today, she brought chocolate chip cookies and they were whole grain. So things like that, that people don't think about, and we're also very much more allergy conscience, conscious, I should say. So.
That was really the only big change, right?
Yeah.
Was the celebration one, yeah.
That, that's the big emphasis. That was one of the things that, in the audit, was pointed out, that we had to make sure it was included, that it hadn't been.
And through the chair, I don't know if Brynmar does this, but Pact, Pact did. My kids were there. They said instead of like, bringing cupcakes, like, bring in a book that you donate to the library. I thought that was such a cute idea.
Yep, yep.
And then they could like, put in that it was from Sydney's birthday or something.
Yeah, I honestly think that the bigger issue with this, excuse me, is more so middle and high school? Because middle and high school kids love food.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean? They're very motivated by food.
Motivated, yes.
You know what I mean? And so they're just gonna have to shift their thinking a bit. Now, they can still have a pizza party, but maybe they're getting pizza party through our food service department instead, right?
Like, that would make life way easier.
And to also think about some other ways versus food, right? It's kind of an easy go-to and can still be fine, but maybe to put some creative thinking in there for that.
Yeah, like cauliflower crust pizza.
Maybe don't go that far. It's not bad, trust me. Someone who can't eat gluten, it's really not that bad.
My kids won't, but I know.
I think it's good.
All right, so let's. Through the chair, brick oven pizza, their gluten-free pizza is my favorite. It is one of my favorites. It's a good, thin crust. It's, absolutely, I'm down. And I am not gluten-free, but I like it.
Does anyone have any, entertain any other questions? But if we could, again, because we're at the end of the year, if we could move forward, even though it's only second read, it would be great.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated APS.
I have one, sorry, quick question, sorry. So the whole, I'm just not, see, I'm probably missing it, because I know what was in here, about not taking away recess. The ones of, I thought that was in this one. I probably am just missing it.
Is a recess before lunch. School staff, it's section one I. School staff will not utilize food or beverages as a reward or punishment. So to me, punishment would be down a letter I.
Oh, okay. That's with food. There was something else about not using, like, taking away recess or.
It must be in the physical education.
I'm probably missing it. I apologize. I know I read it last time.
Yeah, it's, it's physical activity. It's for.
Oh, there it is.
Yep.
It says recess will be offered when weather permits and children will not be kept out of activities for discipline or to make up school assignments.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Throw out that motion again?
Throw it out for us, will you?
I make a motion to approve the updated APS wellness policy.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, the next three items in your packet have to do with the cell phone committee that was brought together several weeks ago to survey families, students, and staff regarding cell phone use in schools. The committee has met multiple times. We just, our last meeting was held just this past Monday, two days ago. So I apologize that these came to you a little bit late because of that. And seemingly, this is, at each level, Swanson, we didn't put anything in here for Brynmar and Paketog. We don't have an issue with cell phones or devices necessarily at Brynmar and Paketog. And so I don't know that we need to build a policy for something that isn't a problem. But at Swanson Road, the middle school and the high school, we tried to look at it as a progressive process. I think the committee was super thoughtful about this and looking at the information and the data that we gathered. We have some folks on the committee that are in other school districts that can have a different perspective on what other places do, and they brought their voice to the table as well. There was a lot of discussion around yonder pouches, which is a way a lot of places are going. For us to bring in yonder pouches for our high school would be close to thirty thousand dollars. That's thirty thousand dollars. You could tell me different. I do not believe we have thirty thousand dollars.
Through the chair, I've been at a few schools and the kids have shown me how they break the yonder pouches. All they need is a very big magnet, or they can say like, they can talk to the phone, like, hey, Suri, whatever, and it will.
I know that kids use burner phones, or they just get a fake phone that they put in the pouch, and then they still have their phone. So I think it, to some degree, right, appeases some of the adults more than it does the kids. And so I'm, I'm glad that the committee didn't try to go that way, even though I told them I don't know where we would get that money for next school year. And there is a feeling like we need to move now versus waiting another whole year to, to do anything. But if we look at Swanson Road and the middle school, they're very similar to what we've already been doing to some degree. So I, I don't think that that's anything new. The high school would be, they're proposing a bell-to-bell, meaning that it is often away in your bag from the time you get into school till the time you leave school. So right now, they can have it as passing in classes. They can have it at lunch. But they, we, we feel like if we do that, then lunch, that's what it's all gonna be about, right? It's gonna, it's gonna concentrate that, that desire for them to get on their phone and mitigate the fact that part of this is trying to get at having kids actually talk to one another when they can. So I was surprised, honestly, that we ended up at this. I kind of thought we would end up just trying to really be heavily enforce what we're already doing with the classroom pouches. But the teachers, and they did, so we had one teacher from the high school on the committee, but they did speak with some others at the building after they kind of started to put their thoughts together. And people are leaning like, we need to try. Now, there's a lot of work that has to go into actually making this happen, and everyone is aware of that. There has to be staff buy-in. There has to be a lot of promotion with families. And my recommendation to, to the committee would be, let's put it like, this is gonna be our one-year trial. And we're gonna try this for next year. And along the way, we're gonna survey families, students, and staff to see how it's going, what's working, what isn't working. We could do that twice, like, you know, once in the, maybe late fall, and then again toward the end of the year to see how it went. And I think maybe we can learn something. I suspect there's something we may not be thinking about. There are some logistics about the in and out with the phones at the end of the day and how that's gonna work. And that's a procedural thing, I think. So I don't know that I would recommend that, that the committee vote this as a policy, per se, because I don't know that we're ready to say this is what we believe the policy is best for our kids. I think we should give it a go, based on the recommendation of the cell phone committee. And again, huge outreach for families and students and staff through the summer and all of that to prepare for this. But that would be my recommendation at this point. But I look to you for any questions or concerns you might have.
I think, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I think my only concern is that, for those special cases, the kids that have severe anxiety or a medical condition, that there be something in writing that says they can have access to their phone.
So there was a lot of discussion about that. And folks felt that if that was a documented situation for a student, whether medically or through an IEP, that the medical documentation of the IEP would trump this policy, even if it was a school committee policy, because that's what happens now.
Yeah.
Right? If we have that. So what they, there was some concern that people would be, if we put it in here specifically, that folks may be saying, or, or trying to look for ways.
Yeah.
To allow that to happen. Versus how we address things like that now in a more organic way, right? We get information from a doctor, or we get, a student gets a new IEP, and that's what they need, then that's what will happen.
But it is in the high school one.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it says.
Yeah, I didn't catch that, so thank you.
It's about halfway, halfway down.
We've had a couple versions.
At the discretion of the nurse, per physician order, students with documented medical needs may utilize phones during class time if necessary.
So I'm sorry, so I must have used, so I would, to me, I think we take that out. Not because we don't want to offer it, but because there's already a mechanism in place to provide that. But if the committee sees differently and feels like it should be in that, you know, we can do that too.
I think we should just put that, I think that it should be somewhere that IEP or Medical 504 is trump.
Like, but that's, through the chair, that's legally how it is anyway. I mean, I'm just thinking about my kiddos who have a diabetes diagnosis.
And I'm thinking of a friend whose daughter uses her phone, and like, kids have said to her like, this isn't fair. And I'm like, um, the kid has a medical reason. So I think.
But do you see that that, that would take precedent over anything we might get? And again, this, for me, for next year, wouldn't necessarily even be called a policy. It would be more like practices and procedures for next year to, as a, as a trial to see how this all goes.
Through the chair, I have a couple.
Yeah.
Concerns or questions, I guess. Mostly because I, my kids are in the high school, so I do, I'm friends with high school parents. And I've heard them say, so I'm just kind of bringing aware to some of the situations, kids who have got, had to go to the restroom and can't get into a restroom because they're all locked and are texting their parents to come get them because they have to go to the bathroom, and they cannot find a restroom that's unlocked.
So the only time that the restrooms are locked is during passing time, which is about four minutes, you know?
But these have actually been school times, during class.
Recently, recently?
Um, in the past couple, I would say the last time I heard it was.
April?
Through the chair, I think it's when they can't find staffing to cover it, I'm thinking. I don't really know.
Well, so that used to be the case.
Oh, okay.
That definitely was.
Yeah.
Because they didn't have duty people. But we worked to change that because they said that, that can't, that shouldn't happen. We have to have, kids have to have access to a restroom, and they can't have to go look, be looking for it.
Yeah, and I know that there are some students who get embarrassed.
Sure.
To go to the nurse and things like that. So I just want to make sure of that.
And, and just to go back to my understanding that it's during passing, is because that is a difficult time to get coverage, to, to supervise the bathrooms, because I'm either coming off my prep or going on to my prep. So I have to be someplace, right? And so the staff is traveling at the same time. Now, we talked about too, that what does that happen? It then pushes the student to leave during class, right? So there's gonna be a discussion around that, like, when's the appropriate time for that to happen, right? Can it be like, right at the get-go when they get there? The big thing is, is that what we don't want, because there's great concern about phones going to bathrooms. So that's another thing, because there are issues with that too, that kids do inappropriate things there. So we want to mitigate that as much as we can. But I will certainly address, because we, we did deal a lot with this earlier in the year. And I said, we just can't, I don't know how we have to figure it out, but we have to figure it out. Kids have to be able to go to the bathroom.
That might have been what, I had heard about it months ago.
Okay, so, yeah. So my understanding right now is it's only during passing. And there was a student who was on our committee who was very vocal about that, who thought that was stupid, because then I have to go during class and I want to leave during class. I want to be able to go during passing time. But it's, it's six of one and half, a dozen of another, right? And I will tell you from my perspective, I have great concern about privacy for kids and cell phones going into bathrooms. So if we can figure it out during class time, whether it's, you know, maybe the first few minutes and then after the main instruction and kids are working on something, you know, that's a time to go kind of thing. Because then we'll have a better chance, we won't stop it always, but we'll have a better chance of the phone staying in the classroom versus going down the hall to the bathroom with the kids.
And through the chair, most schools will tell you that the issues are happening when kids are unsupervised in the bathroom. Like, that's really where a lot of the challenges are happening.
Yeah, it's, that really bothers me for kids, because kids are so self-conscious, right? When they're at that, that age, and I don't want to ever put anybody in a position where something could be recorded or a picture taken or something, you know? That's just, and kids, like, this has become like an appendage to them in some ways. They just have to use it all the time. So I will certainly address that, because I agree with you. That's gotta be accessible, and they shouldn't have to go hunting for an open bathroom.
Yeah.
You know? So, but I'll make sure. I'm only speaking by what I think of, but we did work a lot on that earlier in the year.
Through the chair, my, in middle school, as of right now, they are not, the most, majority of kids don't even use their lockers to put their coats away. And I wasn't on the committee, so I'm not sure what their reasoning between using their locker and off in their backpack is, if that. Because I think often the backpack in, in the middle school is working, but I could be completely wrong. So if we go this route, of course I would support it. I would just want to make sure we give extra time at the beginning and at the end of the day. So kids can use their locker. My only other concern is, because we've gotten away from the kids using their locker, and I'm not sure when that stopped, kids don't know how to use a lock. And I remember being very afraid with my lock and, you know.
The first time, like, which way do I go? What's the number? I went a little, yeah.
Yeah, so I see kids not being able to open it with their lock, having to lock it because it's a security thing for an expensive cellphone, missing the, you know, all of those logistics of it.
Yep.
But if it was something that the committee and, you know, the teachers at the middle school feel strongly that it's an issue with it being in their bags, then of course I would support it. But that's my big concern with, I'm just wondering why not in the bag away.
Yeah, so I think the reason they moved away from lockers was COVID. That all happened during COVID. They had to keep everything with them. And they've not gone back to it. They do have issues in the bathroom.
They do, okay.
So when students, you know, they, they go out, they do have kids, that'll, they'll, they'll text and then they meet in the bathroom or that kind of thing. And so they feel like this is.
Students who will not go to the bathroom.
Yeah, one more layer of separation from the phone to make it a little bit more difficult to do that.
Which I would just want to make sure we give extra time at the beginning and the end of the day. Because I know it's a rush. I've heard kids say, I can't get my jacket, you know?
Yep.
So if we can, I'd be in supportive as long as we put in extra time.
Gotcha.
Maybe get kids to practice.
I think they do that when they have their.
Literally after the first week, they're gonna do it with one thumb.
No, yeah, they'll, they'll figure it out.
When they come, come in in the summer?
Yeah, no, they, they're assigned and everything. I just know as of right now, the culture is not using your lockers, which that was my favorite thing.
Yeah, you decorate it.
Yeah, it was a big deal.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the same as we go up to the high school. And I know that that's predominantly where a lot of these issues are, and I did ask you about that, and it makes complete sense. But just not using the locker, keeping it away in the locker, and that's logistics there as well, correct?
That's, the, the size of that building, going in between classes, if I have to get to my locker, could be a hall.
Okay.
And so that's why they stopped using them there. And we also looked at this as a progressive process, right? So don't bring it at Swiss. Off and away in the locker at the middle school, off and away in your bag at the high school. So it gives kind of a progression based on the age of the kids to try and get them to the point. Because once they go to college, they're not getting a yonder pouch. No one's gonna tell them if they can have their phone on or off. You have someone who teaches some college classes and she's like. Um, you have someone who teaches some college classes and she's like, that's all we talk to them about is like, put your phone away, like I'm teaching kind of thing. In some college classes, you know? And so trying to get them into a habit, there's a responsible person with what you do and what you don't do.
Through the chair, I, I mean, from personal experience, I think, I think it's working at Swiss, it's working at Auburn Midall right now. Um, as best as it can, and I think, I think we're going to face an uphill battle with this. We've, we, we have the same policy in my school, like off and away, catch it, you get, you know, warning, second time it gets taken away. And, and it, it, I think that we're gonna see like an uptick, especially in the middle and high school. With Mr. Carlson, Mr. DeLongchamp, like dealing with cellphones.
Oh, they, they know it.
So, so it's just, it's like coming down, like that's a fair warning that that's gonna happen. My, my one concern that I definitely want to voice is like, I know that like my daughter has an Apple Watch that she uses. Like she actually legitimately uses it during the day, but she doesn't, it has no Wi-Fi. So it can't, well, it has Wi-Fi, but it can't text me. Like she has, like she utilizes school email or calls me.
Yeah.
So I think we're gonna get some pushback for sure on that with parents, because I want to push back on that personally.
The problem is, is that we don't, there's no way for us to know.
There is no way to know.
And we do have, even at Swanson Road, kids with smartwatches whose parents text them during the school day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sure. And so I think there's also that, like, we need parents to un, and this is what I face in my school is like, we need parents to, I, I mean. A kid asked me today, can I go text my mom? I said, no, you gotta go to the nurse. Now, I don't know, when he leaves my classroom, if he, he signed out to go to the nurse, doesn't mean he went to the nurse, but I'm assuming like he didn't get dismissed, he went to the nurse. But I think that we're gonna face some pushback from parents on certain things. So like, we should just be prepared for that. And again, we need to also educate parents, like, don't text your child during the day. Like there are times where I'm like, oh, I wish I could just text Frey and I'm like, nope. You can't do that because then I'm breaking the own rules that I set. So, I mean, we, we just have to like be wary that we're, I think we're gonna get some pushback on some of these things. But again, we need to teach the kids, you know, like cellphones, like shouldn't, like, when you're at school, you're at school. And especially the earbuds, like half the time I see kids walking around with them and I'm like, a truck could drive up behind you and you wouldn't hear it. And, and it's very frustrating, so I think we're gonna definitely get some pushback. I'm okay with trying it out for the year and putting it out to parents and saying, we're gonna try it out for the year, we're gonna see how it goes, we're gonna see. Cause we may find that like this is working great, or we may find that it's just a lot of work for Mr. Carlson and the admin over at Auburn Middle. And Mr. DeLongchamp and the admin and the teachers and constantly that back and forth fight. And you know, Beth, like, there's gonna, it's, it's gonna be constant. So we just have to kind of see, it's changing an entire culture.
Through the chair, I do just want to voice, cause I keep hearing a lot about, you know, we're finding kids in the bathroom, we're finding this. If it's this small of a percentage of children, and I don't know, maybe it is or it isn't. Again, I just hate the idea of penalizing the, the crowd for the minimum. Um, but again, I wasn't on the, if that's what they feel is, is best, but I just, I get concerned about those kids who are following the rules. Who aren't taking it out of their backpack, um, who are getting penalized.
Yeah.
Because a small percentage of children are not, or in parents, it sounds like, aren't following the rules.
But be more specific, because what, so this isn't about us controlling kids, right? This is about a lot of research that's out there now about the need for kids to disconnect. And the need for kids to have that time away, not particularly from their cellphone, but from the access to social media. That's, that's where this is all really coming from, is to get that, get that break from that social media piece. Because obviously we use technology, so I, I, now I'm concerned honestly, because I don't see this as a punitive thing. What we're trying to do with this is create a more focused learning culture in each of the schools. That it isn't about running out of class so you can check your Snapchat, right? That it's just a different, i- it's a, it's a work environment. Every minute that you're there is a work environment. And you're here to learn and it's, trying to also say, it's okay to take a break from social media. It's okay to wait a few hours to check one of those things. So I hope that folks out there aren't looking at this, that we're trying to penalize kids because they have phones. Cause I, I'll speak for myself and I don't think the committee took this, this angle on it either. That we're looking to penalize anybody. But it's really about creating a culture and schools where they have done this successfully overwhelmingly. Say that this has a positive impact on the overall school climate. With kids better connecting with one another, better connecting with their teachers and better connecting with content.
I guess even at the middle school, I would feel more comfortable if they were in the backpacks instead of the lockers personally. Cause I see that bringing a lot of anxiety to kids who have never used a locker. Or can we, and I don't know if you can, can you start with the sixth grade next year? And then, just because they've never used the locker and I see that causing anxiety and being like, well, I'm not using my phone this year, why do I have to do that next year? But that's just my, I, I don't think it's penalizing, you know, honestly, I think the idea of not using your phone all day is great. And I don't know a lot about social media, cause I, my kids don't have it, so I don't know, but it probably is a thing that they're all going to.
Through the chair, like I don't think it's punitive at all. I just foresee what I've seen happen in my district, parents like, why do you get to decide what my child is doing on their cellphone? I've, I've had that and I'm with Megan, that I don't let my child have social media either. But I have like stumbled across kids on my daughter's softball team with Snapchat or with, um, Instagram. And with, right, sixth grade with TikTok and I'm like, and it's very jarring to me because like as a parent, I won't allow that, but I'm not their parent. So I, I just want us to be mindful that we might get pushback. And to, for the community to realize that we understand that that might happen. You know, I think if we stay silent, just say, yeah, no, push it through, without actually having like a conversation about what the possible impact of it is. We, we do the same thing in my school, like the same, you know, first strike, second strike, third strike. And it works, but then you owe, but you still have those kids and those are the same kids every time that you're like, why is your cellphone in your pocket? And like they'll come back from the bathroom and you can see it in the outline of their hoodie, like, so we're, it's just, I don't think it's punitive. I think it fits, the punishment fits the crime, but at the same time, I think it's gonna be a lot of work. And we also, the big thing, huge, teacher and staff buy-in. Cause if you don't have teacher and staff buying, if there are that one teacher that's like the cool teacher that lets their kid have the phone in the school, then you have just lost the entire policy.
Well, and based on the conversation tonight, there's already a plan. If, if this, if you choose to push this forward for us to try it next year, that, um, there would be already some work, I think, primarily at the high school. Um, to begin those conversations and there'd have to be a lot of communication about it too.
Through the chair, um, has Mr. DeLongchamp seen this?
He was on the committee, as was one of his teachers. And they've also shared with some of the, um, department chairs, they haven't shared it widely yet. Honestly, we were under a bit of a time crunch with the way this all played out for the school year for sure. Um, so if there's hesitancy, we don't have to do it, nobody's saying we have to do it, right? It's just that there's all, you know, several states now have already, you know, the state has come across to say cellphones are not allowed in schools. They're not allowed in schools. So you can't even bring them into schools, that be, that's become a law in a number of states. There are a number of other states who are considering the same, Massachusetts being one of them.
How do you stop it from coming into school?
Well, that's another ball of wax, but I'm telling you that if it's the law, we're gonna follow it, right?
No, of course, of course, but how do you, how do you institute that?
And I, I'm not going down that rabbit hole, cause we're not anywhere near there yet. But there is a push for this based on the, the troubling evidence of the damage that social media does. Initially to girls and long-term for boys. Um, they talk about self-esteem, self-confidence, all of those things about body image for girls. And with boys, it's a lot of gaming, but then they, there's a lot of pornography that gets involved with very young boys who have this access. And so if we as a school, I understand that I, I'm not going, I'm not trying to tell any family what they need to do. But when, just like when you go to work, you have to do what, what, what the, the work community tells you you need to do. This is what kids have to do when they're with us. I'm not telling them to not give them phones or just tell them they shouldn't have their kids on social media. What I'm saying is, when they're with us, this is a healthier environment, I believe, when they are. And so that's all we're trying to get at and this isn't a judgment, this isn't anything. But, um, it's, it's coming in a lot of ways, in other ways, you know? So this is really about just giving them a break.
Well, and I think out of courtesy for the people that did spend the time in this committee, on this committee, we owe them to at least try this plan.
Oh, I agree, I think we should try it.
So, I mean, I, I think like, there are a lot of people, I mean, people put in a lot of time and effort and thought and students did too and parents and everything. So, um, yeah, I think we should, out of the sake of time and, you know, the energy spent, we should approve this. Um, not as a policy, but as a trial run.
And then we can revisit whether, like what worked, what didn't.
Well, and that's the idea. You know, I think like, um, September, October, like maybe November, early December, right before we get to that mid-year break. That there's another, some kind of a survey. Maybe at the high school, you know, they have activity blocks, so they could have some little, they have, um, some discussion points, right? With all the kids to have a conversation. For me, a survey tells you one thing, a conversation tells you another thing, you know? So, uh, maybe we can do some things like that and then again, at the end of the year to get some feedback.
Through the chair, I just have one quick question. Do you know how we would roll this out to present this to the students? Is, are we talking in handbook, uh, things like that? Because I just, I, I gotta, I'm just kind of thinking on how teenagers react. And I'm just wondering if this is something that should be almost like a, um. Oh God, what do they call it? Let me say.
Like an assembly.
Thank you.
Town hall.
I couldn't think of the word, some sort of assembly, almost preparing them. And that way they cannot kind of come back and be like, I didn't know, I didn't know what the first, I, all these different things. And is it possible to start presenting it over the summer, maybe sending it out? So that way these kids can start preparing and getting ready and understanding that when I walk into this school and now we're gonna have an assembly. And this is the way it's gonna be.
Yeah, so a couple of things. So I will tell you, as you know, all of the specific logistics of the implementation of this, we, we haven't gone all that far. But we do, and I would say that if tonight, if you say that we're gonna move forward with a trial with this. To me, I would have that first conversation with kids before they go, cause you're not getting them all back in before the first day of school. Yeah. Um, we'll have a chance, um, you know, a lot of the, the incoming freshmen will come in, they've all, and actually we could talk to them at eighth grade, right? Before they even get there. So that has to be, I think, a face-to-face this year, if that's the way where they're gonna go. And then yes, absolutely, um, there will be communications throughout the summer, there have to be, you know, there have to be. And it's still gonna be a bumpy open, there's no doubt about it. Um, but we know that any big thing like this, I was just saying, it's taken me three years and finally people are getting the hang of the bus applications. Like, I'm like, finally, like, we only have a few hundred people that haven't done it, that's a miracle. But it took me three years, so big things like this take time and we just have to accept that there is gonna be pushback. There is gonna be some discomfort. Um, you know, Dan also hopes to kind of set the stage at the high school, that staff buy-in is really important. We have to be rowing in the same direction or it just doesn't fly. And when we think of it through the context of what I believe is that this is what is good for kids. I find it hard to believe that anybody should say no, because it is good for kids. And guess what? We have to model these, these things too, so there's that other con- conversation. We have to model, we can't all have our phones on our desks and be checking them every two minutes, right? If we're in class, that's not okay.
And a lot of these kids are gonna go out and get jobs in their high school years, they're not gonna be able, work at McDonald's to be on their phone.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to detach and I think it's a good idea to, let's start teaching them how to detach.
Yep.
Um, but yeah.
Yeah, so again, I don't want anybody to think we're trying to punish anybody because that is not the intention of this. Um, you know, I talk about that book, Anxious Generation, and I recommend it to anybody with kids to read it. Um, and I, I suspect we'll use some of that book in what we sent out, and I've already sent some of that out to families about what's in there. He's also coming out with a book called The Amazing Generation, which from what I've heard, seems to want to encourage kids to make that choice yourself. To disconnect in whatever ways you can, to maybe not get rid of everything, but to minimize it because of the impact it has on you as a person, you know?
Mental health.
And your mental health, you know? So that's gonna be coming and maybe something we can do with our students is also, I'm not gonna remember his name, Connor Tanner, Tanner Connor. But he's someone that comes and talks to kids, which maybe we could do in October, to talk about, why is it good to disconnect? And what does it do for your brain and what does it do for your relationships and what does it do for your interest level, right? They talk about kids, they have no interest in, you know, going out and, I mean, I was in high school, was still playing kick the can sometimes, you know what I mean? Um, so things like that, so, um, I don't know. It's, it's, it's your decision with how we move forward, but.
Through the chair, if you don't mind, I would, I have a couple of questions. That wanted to get everybody wanted to have their thing, so this is a hot topic. Everybody is very passionate on all sides, yes, for, against, in the middle, and you know? Um, for, uh, your faculty, um, at all the, the grade levels, is their cellphone required to be on their person? Or do they have like two-way radios that they communicate?
Well, they either have phones or they have radios, they have classroom phones.
Classroom phones.
Or radios, yeah.
So teachers are gonna be allowed to have their cellphone on them because they need it? And we're gonna tell all the students that they can't have their phone?
No, I was just saying that.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm trying to like, how does the, I don't, I don't go to school, I haven't been in thirty years ago. Like, cellphones weren't a thing, right? So I'm trying to understand what our faculty is gonna be up against versus what we're telling our students, right? So we have to educate our students that their cellphone is to be displaced. Not away forever, but it needs to be over here, locked, safe, whatever. But then our teachers can be on their phones and their tablets.
They're not supposed, we're not supposed to.
Well, tablets I think are different, cause everyone has a tablet, but they have classroom phones, just like when we were in school.
Yeah, I mean, like the phone on the wall, like they have this.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
So faculty can't have their phone on them?
Well, I'm not gonna say that our faculty can't have it on them, but what I said earlier is, they need to model. That no, their cellphone should not be out and on their desk, it should be tucked away while they're teaching kids, absolutely.
Okay.
And when I was a principal, what I, you know, I, I was very strict about that, like, don't let me walk in and see you on a cellphone. Um, but there would be times that someone would come and say, you know, my mother's in the hospital, the doctor's supposed to call me, is it okay if I have my phone out for this morning?
Right.
Absolutely. You know, we're gonna have some common sense around all of this, right? It makes sense.
Right.
But we, we, if I'm teaching a class, I shouldn't be walking by and tapping my phone to see if I got a message. Because what is that model for kids is that that's okay. So that's where we have to kind of thread the needle.
Right, so, and then everybody has like their tablet, middle school and high school, I'm not talking about Swiss, they have a tablet. Can that tablet do like the, the chat apps, whatever their WhatsApp? Any, any of those?
You can't download anything.
Microsoft type teams things?
What we give them, they get what we give them, they can't download anything.
You can use the email, but that's about it.
Okay, I'm just trying to, what technology will they have that should be like used as part of their learning? Like, do you see what I'm trying to say?
Yes, so the, the, everything on the iPad, like for AMS, like everything on the iPad's already on there, the school puts it on, like the tech puts it on.
Okay.
So the only thing that I think they could use to like contact their friends is email, but it is monitored.
Right.
So, you know, I needed Frey to email a couple of friends for something and I reached out to Mr. Carlson and I said, would this be okay if she used this platform? And if he said no, the answer was no. Um, so, the, like you can't, the only access you really have is whatever the school puts on. So if there's, there's a potential for like, like Google Meet, right? And they find that that's a problem, they'll just pull it off.
Okay, I'm just trying to, where there is a will, there is a way, right?
Oh, and there's still gonna be, right, right, cause they're way smarter than we are when it comes to something. So we're gonna have issues that are, that are, but we're gonna address those as they come.
I will say that my students, I can sometimes see them emailing their friends. But again, that is all like public record, so if there's a problem, I can, like as a teacher, you can go to the tech department and say, can you pull this kid's email?
Right.
And then.
I'm just trying to like, so they can't text anymore, they can't Snapchat, BT, whatever it's called, cause they don't have their cellphone. So what's, what's the other avenue, right?
Download anything on those iPads.
So they would be emailing, which when they sign their release for, you have an iPad, set up your email, this is how you do the things. We have access to all your stuff, whatever. You have to remember, I have, like little in the beginnings, they have. You have to remember, I have, like, little in the beginnings, they have it in the classroom, it's not a take-home, I'm just trying.
Thing for teachers, like, any, any email that I send through a school is monitored by the school, that's public, like, it's public.
Okay.
So we're, we're also told, like, this is public.
Yep, yep.
So in theory, to model, so I'm just trying to like paint the picture of what does the fall look like. So they all have their iPads, the teachers are going to have a hundred percent buy-in, and their phones will be away while they are teaching the students while bell-to-bell, or whatever, right? And the students will be okay with it, maybe, they'll be a little pushed back, but they were, they're like, hey, you know what? Dr. Chamberlain doesn't have her cellphone because she's teaching this class today, you know what, maybe I should pay attention. Can I go to the bathroom? Like, do you know what I mean? But then there's no issue, cuz there's no pictures, there's no way to record or whatever. And if they emailed Brooke and and Megan and Jess, I'm going to the bathroom right now, you would have that, and then you would see the timing.
Well, the other thing we can do, so that that could happen, right? Somebody's gonna meet in the bathroom, but they won't have their cellphone with them. But when we have kids that shouldn't be together or abuse that privilege, we can, we have smart pass, so kids have to get an electronic pass to go to the bathroom.
Right.
We can say that if Suzie has a pass, you can't get one.
Blocks them.
It blocks them from getting the ability to go.
Okay, okay, no, I'm just, like I said, I'm trying to paint my, I am a, you know, sixteen-year-old girl in high school, god.
I make my way around the.
And how do I, how do I, how do I have a day, right? Where you are learning, cuz that's what you're here to do, like, you can fight and whatever, all you want, but like, you know? Um I'm just trying to understand what it's like, cuz it, cuz I don't know, right?
I think the other thing I would say through the chair is that um uh kids aren't always, like, in every single class, their iPad is not, you know, up and running all the time. So I I might send that email to my friends, but that doesn't mean if they're in the class next to me that they're sitting there looking at their emails, so.
Right, okay.
Um they're, they're.
I mean, I, I know, it's a tool, it's a tool so that they can, you know, not carry around five-hundred-pound textbooks like I had to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think my back is still a little rounded from that, you know, papers and stuff.
That's what I'm kind of excited about with the lockers, maybe they are backpacks a little less.
I, I, so the, so the locker thing, I I love that, and I remember, I mean, if your locker's on the first floor and you have to be on the third floor, make it work. Find out where the closest staircase is, let's go, you know? I mean, they did it back then, they can do it again, it's a learning curve, and understanding and patience and empathy are obviously going to be needed. But I just wanted to know from a do-as-I-say, not-as-I-do, I wanted to make sure that the buy-in for this, we're talking about all the people are bell-to-bell, all faculty, staff, everyone was on board. Like, I'm trying to understand.
I, I don't know that I'm saying that if I have a prep period, that I couldn't make a phone call on my cellphone to my husband.
Right.
On my prep period.
Right, right, right.
Right, but it's about modeling when we're in front of kids, I think.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, I'm just trying to figure it out, like, from a standpoint, cuz I don't know if you know what a gizmo watch is? You can have the, you kill it to school mode, so the only thing it can do is emergency phone call to that one person. They can't text, they can't do anything. It's a smartwatch, it does their steps, that's what they're doing for whatever.
Problem with those is that they they can turn on, can't they turn on and have internet?
No.
Cuz there are some.
No. It's it's controlled, it's controlled by the user.
Is having, exactly, so the problem is, is the school doesn't know that Sam's daughter's watch doesn't connect to internet. Mr. Carlson has no way of knowing that, and just because someone says it doesn't connect to internet, that puts us in a pickle. Because now, that's, that's a whole different level of policing, right?
Yeah.
And it's impossible to do, it's really impossible to do.
Through the chair, my recommendation was, let's put it forward, and then let's put it on the agenda for the first meeting in October.
I agree.
And see how it goes for that month, and then um if we're finding that it's not working.
I think we gotta give it longer than a month.
Yeah, I think it might need a little longer.
No, I, yes, but that would.
We can do a touch base.
Touch, touch base and then go from there.
I agree. Halfway through the year, maybe, or?
Well, we can touch base in October, and I can report out on it
Yeah.
with how things are going.
I mean, if there are some glaring things that we didn't think of, we can change it at that point.
Yeah, and some things may certainly float to the surface quite quickly.
Yeah.
You know?
Mm-hmm.
Um and we can.
Spending thirty thousand dollars on pockets to.
Through the chair, I just had one other question, so this is all gonna be, violations are all gonna run through the principal's office? Is that what I'm reading?
Yes.
In all of those polls, okay.
Yep.
All right, are we ready to vote on this crazy motion that I've tried to write up? Um thinking, can I get a motion to implement a trial run of the cellphone practices outlined in the presented documents for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year with focus, uh put focus groups being held halfway through the year to gauge how the program is going?
With feedback gathered, maybe, feedback, right, from students and families and.
Yeah. Feedback gathered, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. Mandy?
Did you get it?
With feedback.
She'll look at the recording.
Okay, and I, shorthand, yes. Okay. Okay, I need a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
No.
Hi.
Hi.
No.
Order one.
I don't think it's ready, personal opinion. But you gotta do something, it's a double-edged sword.
Yeah, we also have to respect the people that put the time in.
Absolutely.
So we'll give it a whirl and touch base and.
I get it, I just can't.
Good for you.
Look at this, we have opposition for the first time in three years.
I know.
Feel like we're back at the half-days from a couple of years ago. Oh, the ma, that was a fun one.
All right, we are ready to move on.
Okay, so the next one is our announcement of retirees, so on, in your agenda, you'll see the list of retirees um at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um so Gayla Bjaksha, uh Swiss art teacher for thirty-seven years, Marie Mahan, Auburn Middle School teacher. She was uh for a period of years also principal at Bryn Mawr for eighteen years, and assistant principal at Swanson prior to that. Uh Donna Kamara is a pre-K ABA, she's been with us twenty-six years. Teresa Rhodes, a Bryn Mawr um kindergarten instructional assistant for fifteen years, and Joe Trong as the uh part-time shared, uh shared-job nurse at Auburn High School. Um so yeah, so we wish them well and thank them for all their service, um and know that they're on to a new adventure.
Great, congrats to all of them, um I do need a motion.
Take a motion to thank the twenty twenty-five retirees for their many years of service and to sign the distribute, and distribute letters to retirees.
Say it.
Tyrese.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Awesome, okay, so the letters are good. Uh the next item is just a reminder about the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five MASC, MAS joint conference that takes place down in, down the Cape from November twelfth to the fourteenth. Good opportunity for you all to come, if anyone is interested in going, please reach out to Mandy via email, uh and we will take care of that registration.
All right, that is a good, a good thing to attend if you can. All right, we'll move on to the.
I think, yes. Teaching and learning.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Turn over to you, Mr. Keller.
All right, um I can't see my cursor.
More than six slides, just so you guys know.
Well, um for some reason, I can't find, that's all right, I'll just go through, that's all right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Um.
Do I have a copy?
Yeah.
I never get a copy.
He's hiding it from you.
Why do I never get a copy?
I usually put it here.
No, I don't have one, sorry. That's okay.
Here, Megan and I can share.
That's okay, that's okay, no, 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 go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
That's fine, we can share.
Thank you, Samantha.
Oh, look at that, look at you go.
I couldn't hear Mandy, but I could, sorry.
Not used to sitting for so long.
I found it, there we go. Um okay, so um you you may remember, uh on April sixteenth, um Greg Walton and I presented uh on the Integrated Monitoring Review, uh which was done for our Special Education Department. At the time, we commented like this was our year of, not like, this was our year of compliance, I sound like a middle-schooler. This was our year of compliance, we had three different um monitoring programs, the Special Education, we had one for our ESSA, our grant funding, and then what I'm going to present tonight, which is around a targeted and focused monitoring review, which is around our um EL program, our English learners. Um so um, ah, we're too far. So um ta- this targeted and focused monitoring review occurs every six years in all Massachusetts District and Charter Schools, and they look at twelve different criteria, and they are not numerically listed one through, one through twelve. There's a variety of things that are ELE standards and criteria, but not all of them are measured in the, in the review. That's why it goes one through eighteen despite the fact that there are twelve. Um so the process, I won't bore you with a lot of details, but there's a self-assessment in which we look at all the standards internally and ensure that we're adhering to them, and those that we aren't, um we have to pay attention to, and that is certainly part of the process from Department of Education. They are not coming in saying, this is a gotcha system, this is a, we want you to be better, and we're here to help support you, and so there are some things uh that you'll see that we realized as we were going through it, that we need to, standards have been updated, things have changed, our population changed, and that we needed to update. So we go through that, look at our records, and then submit records to the Department of Education, and then step two on the right is where the Department of Education comes in, they look at a variety of records, they request uh further samples on certain things. They also send out parent surveys, uh and review them, um and then they interviewed staff. And then the other, last two items are optional when they do these reviews, and they didn't do either of those based on um the materials that we had submitted as part of this process. So um each criteria, each of those twelve criteria get um one of five uh ratings. I highlighted the ones in blue that we received, we either got implemented, with, meaning that we met all of, all of the aspects of it, or we got partially implemented, uh where the requirement was not entirely met. So you'll see on the next page that um six of these criteria we met, uh and six of them, we were, we were partially implemented. So um I would love to spend all day telling you how wonderful we were on the implemented ones, but I suspect that uh what of more importance is looking at those that are partially implemented. So I'll go through each one of these uh relatively quickly, and obviously, if you have questions, please ask. But um the first one that we found as partially implemented was identifying and coding students with limited uh or interrupted formal education, so those are um what are referred to as SLIF, that's acronym that is used for those students. Um so ultimately, this came down to um a coding thing, and so Randy, who is our district data coordinator, and I had a conversation, we were not successfully or properly uh coding students who were SLIF students uh within Power School. And so it looked like um to the Department of Education, or anybody that would look at it, as though we didn't have students who were SLIF, and we should have. So uh ultimately, our remedy is to um ensure that we have the protocol for identifying those students. The second one is program placement and structure, and so uh we did not have, we were cited for not having a a good process for personalized goals for attaining English proficiency for students, and having explicit English as a second language and SLIF instruction slash programming a curriculum. So uh our remedies for um these, the first one is to, we, this past year, we brought on our Elevations Platform, which is an outstanding uh software program that is integrated into Power School. So a teacher can go into Power School and then connect to Elevations and see what goals that student has, how he or she is proceeding through those goals. Uh we brought that on this past year, um but we're learning it as we went, and so um next year, and we had a meeting this afternoon, and we'll be having further conversations about ensuring that everybody has access to this, and that we're using it regularly. So that is our remedy for the first one, and then the second one is, I'm really excited to be able to say that we have purchased a curriculum uh thanks to work with uh obviously Dr. Chamberlain, Ms. Stanek, and Greg Walton, um that we, HQIM, you have heard me say a hundred times, but high-quality instructional materials, that's a major emphasis on the part of the Department of Education. They identified two curricula for English learners, and uh we looked at both of them, and the one that we selected was English three D. And so we are bringing uh bringing that on um beginning next year, actually, we're gonna be start, start work with it in the summer, and it's a K-through-twelve curriculum for English learners, and it, it is very impressive, it has print materials as well as electronic materials. Uh and it's not a K, it is K-through-twelve, but it is based on where they are and their readiness. So uh there is a uh literacy launch uh program, so a kid could be in second grade or in kindergarten, depending where they are on their, on their trajectory. So those are our two remedies in that regard. Um the next item is program exit readiness. Um so the Department of Ed says students can only exit uh our English language program if they have a four-point-two score overall on access testing and a three-point-nine in literacy. And unfortunately, there were some times where we would look at a student uh who had been in the program for many years, and have a of a belief that that student can be exited from the program, um and we would move that student on. But ultimately, Department of Ed, the education says, no, it has to be the four-point-two and a three-point-nine, and you cannot exit students if they don't, despite the fact that that kid might have been in the program for four years, and you have a strong belief that um he or she is ready to move on, but uh so we have to be firm about not exiting students unless they've met those criteria. Um the next item was declining entry to a program, um so yeah, uh the issue was formal mechanisms for monitoring students whose parents declined. So at the beginning of each year, we send an email, uh a sentence, excuse me, send a notification to parents saying, your child's been identified for English Learning Services, you have the option of saying no to that, and we do send that. We do honor those requests if a, if a parent says, I don't want my child in, in the program. Um however, we are still required to make sure that we're monitoring those students, and we haven't, Elevations will help us do that, and that's not an area that we have, were able to document consistently at the K-to-twelve level that we were keeping tabs on those students. So that is, Elevations will help us significantly in that regard. Um there's thirteen next, or did I skip one? Okay, um so uh thirteen is ensuring regular progress monitoring of former English learners. So those are students who have graduated, who have met those criteria that I mentioned before, a four-point-two and a three-point-nine. Uh and again, similar to what I just mentioned with um those students who have opted out, Elevations will allow us to keep tabs on those students and be able to document um that consistently, and be able to show both internally as well as externally uh to the Department of Education that we have these formal monitoring procedures. And then um licensure requirements was uh the most annoying one um in that uh we were cited as having teachers that did not have SEI, so that's Sheltered English Immersion endorsement. And I say it was annoying because we actually did have all of our teachers who did have that. Unfortunately, it came down to a, a data thing, uh when we submitted our report, we had a teacher who no longer worked here, who had retired years ago. And then we had a teacher who was a substitute teacher that for whatever reason got lumped into active staff
So, oh no.
Um as not having that, and so um it's ultimately, this is a, a, you know, a technicality. Nonetheless, it's something that we need to make sure that we are uh crystal clear on, and Randy has been outstanding. Was this her first year or her second year, I can't remember?
Second.
Second year, so she's been outstanding, incredibly thorough about crossing all Ts and dotting all Is, and so I have no doubt that those, it, those issues, excuse me up here, will be remedied very quickly. But that was the um the last piece of this. Um so those are the six ones that we were partially implemented. Um we have actually training next week with our um EL staff on our new textbook series, English three D. Um summer program, we're doing a summer program like our Title One program for our English learners, and they're actually gonna be using um the English three D program. Uh teachers are getting used to that and accustomed to it, students will be getting used to it. Um and then we had to, as a district, submit this thing called a Continuous Improvement and Monitoring Plan. Um so Ashley Isgro, who's the department leader in English learner um education, her and I are getting together and spending some time over the summer to um establish these protocols that I mentioned for the other pieces. And um also, at the school level, at the district level, making sure that we're including those um CIMP actions into district and school planning. And the last thing I'll say on this particular topic is that um we have um target dates of giving action updates to the Department of Education on August sixth and November eleventh with regards to this whole tiered and focused monitoring review.
Wow.
You can breathe now.
Well, I was trying to go quick, that was more than six slides, but I tried to make it seem like six slides.
Woo, that was a lot, yeah, oh, thank you very much, all right, yeah, very thorough.
I just had one question, is that three D gonna be used, is it July? That they have like the summer camp?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes, it will be used, yeah, so the, the training starts next week, um cuz I wanna get, so all of our English, uh our EL tutors are um are supporting our summer program, and so they're gonna be using that, as well as like what they did last year too, using some games and different ways to be using the English language and interacting with others, so, but yeah. I was meeting with uh the teacher before this meeting, uh to talk about how we can incorporate uh both.
Any more questions for Mr. Keller concerning that? All righty.
Um I'll do the next two as well.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so um, so in your packet, um there's wording on um student handbooks, and so we received. Yep. So, so in your packet, there's wording on student handbooks. And so, we received information from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents on dress code language regarding supporting, ensuring that there's a safe and supportive environment in all schools. So, our principals and assistant principals met to look at language in that regard. And so, we ultimately are recommending that in all handbooks, pre-K through 12, that we add the following statement, which is, "Students must refrain from wearing clothing that is disruptive to the educational process, poses safety concerns, and/or interferes with an individual's right to learn in a harassment-free environment."
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments?
What does that mean? Like, I don't, I don't understand, like, so.
It's subjective.
I don't know what that means.
Yeah. So, so there, so ultimately, so there was a case in Middleborough, I believe, that, that was attempted to go to the Supreme Court, but the Supreme Court said no. And so, a student wore to school a shirt that said, "There are two genders. There are only two genders," I believe, is what, is what it, is what it said. And so, so the school at that point followed the process in the handbook, the, and had the student take off, take the shirt or put on a different shirt. That student and his family then sued the school and the district to say that he had a right to wear that shirt. And so, so that's kind of where the systemic from is, is that, that a, we provide a lot of freedom in terms of what students wear, but if what they're wearing ultimately can be seen as disruptive or interfering with somebody else's right to learn in a harassment-free environment, then, then we have a right to say, "That is a shirt that we don't feel like you could be wearing at this time."
So, a little gun.
So, through the chair, if a student wears a Pride shirt, are we saying that they can't wear that?
It's just unclear.
So, I don't know how a Pride shirt would disrupt the learning environment.
Because if someone can wear a shirt that, can't wear a shirt that says two genders, there's only two genders, it's obviously disrupting to that student. So, I, you know what I'm saying? So, I just don't want.
Where do you draw the line?
I don't, if he.
Or she.
He or she, that student can't wear that shirt, are they going to come back and say?
So, this isn't like we're checking at the door where we're going, "Yes, no, yes, no, yes, no," right?
Yeah.
So, this is in response to if there were, so there were students that were, in this particular court case, very troubled and expressed their, their, their feelings to administration, that it was making them feel unsafe in that environment. So, this would be if that were to occur. So, we're not, we're not, we're not policing it in the sense of just, "You're walking in, no, you can't wear that. It's not going to happen like that." I mean, unless obviously it was something extremely vulgar, graphic, or violent.
So, just to play devil's advocate, although I don't see this being an issue, I hope, if somebody is wearing a Pride shirt and another person says, "That's offensive to me," do we have to do something about that at that point?
I think that's a, so, this is all gray, and it does all, Alan, I don't mean to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
This is, this is gray. There's no doubt about it. But I think this is us taking a stand to say that we're going to address it. Now, in some cases, it might be a conversation with kids to say, "Well, let's talk about that. What do you mean?" Right? "How is this disrupting this?" And coming to some sort of a resolution, right? The case, the court case was an extreme case where the family went to court, right? Because they wanted their, their child to wear that shirt to school. So, it is going to be still a case-by-case basis, I think. Would you, is that what you understood from what we got from MASSS, where we're talking about these things, right, and trying to bring understanding? However, we want folks to know that, you know, we, we need to try and be respectful to everybody in the community.
And through the chair, this language approved by MASSS. Like, I'm just wondering, legal-wise, this is okay to say?
They sent out some examples, I think, right?
Okay, perfect, great.
Of what, what, what places are you using?
Through the chair, I, I don't mind the language. I just want to make sure that we have a leg to stand on. So, Legal has said, "This is fine."
I did not send this to our attorney.
Okay.
I can't if the board so chooses.
I think through the chair, where I'm thinking is like, you have a boy or a girl who's saying, "Well, that, what that child is wearing, that person is wearing spaghetti straps. That's distracting." Like, we're, it's muddy to me. It's, I, I think we should run it by Legal personally. I, I think it's muddy. I think it's, they, and it's concerning to me because someone could easily say, someone could be wearing a shirt with a flag on it, thinking of the current situation in certain parts of the country, in certain parts of the world, someone could wear, wearing a Russia flag, someone's Ukrainian, ugh, you know, like, is that, could, could that fall under this? Or could it not? It's too muddy for me.
Okay. I, I think, again, it's about awareness. So, and I'm, I'm happy to pass it by Legal to see if it's okay. I think that it's about giving thought to this. And then, in the case that someone does, they may not even know that it's offensive to someone else. And on the other part of it, is it really offensive? Or are you making a stand? There are two different things there, and that's part of the conversation that happens in a, in a respectful environment, you know? So, again, this isn't about standing at the door and with the sorting hat, "You're good, you're not," you know?
We'd happily make the motion with the stipulation that Legal gives us the okay.
Yeah, I think it opens up the door for a lot of issues.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, would we be okay with that wording?
I'm 100% okay with the wording as long as Legal says that is appropriate, it's open to discretion, or the, for staff and faculty discretion, whatever. Because like you said, you have to educate. Is it offensive or is it a stance? And that's where the hot topic is going to be.
Yeah. I think the other piece of this is, is the reason that the school in Middle, Middleborough was supported was because they had this statement. Had they not, things could have gone differently.
Could have gone differently.
So, that's part of the angle or the reason why MASSS is sharing this, is because that's what protected them, a similar statement.
Yeah.
And what is our current wording? Do we have it?
We don't have anything specific to this.
No, we have, we have a variety of things at, at, you know, the, actually, at the K through 12 level, but nothing specific getting into this.
Okay.
I mean, honestly, this isn't something that has to be decided right now. So, if you, and we would wait till the first meeting in the fall. I can bring it back then if you'd like, once I get, get word from Legal.
Would we prefer to put it off?
Is it okay to?
I would make a motion.
We can always add it into a handbook.
Yeah.
I would make a motion with Legal's approval, the language.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And if they have any questions, we can bring them back to the next meeting.
Okay. Gotcha.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the updated language as presented for all student handbooks with the approval of our legal counsel.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, my last thing is, as you know, we have new math textbooks coming in to the district, K through eight in the fall. And so, we have K through five Go Math textbooks and Grade 6 through 8 Big Ideas math textbooks that have been discontinued or replaced with newer editions. Those texts are no longer of use to us and represent a value of less than $5,000. So, in accordance with School Committee Policy DN, I'm looking to see if we can discard those textbooks or recycle or donate.
I'm just kidding. I don't have any.
I vote no.
Like, as I always do, like, can we make sure AYFS doesn't want any of them or something? You know, the library?
Yes.
Or something like that.
Even another district.
Yeah.
Yep. I have, I have sought on the Assistant Superintendent listserv to see if anybody in anticipation of today is interested. So, I will definitely look everywhere we can go. There's just, there's a lot less places, unfortunately, than there used to be. Fall was a big company that used to buy used textbooks, which was wonderful. We'd actually get money.
Yeah.
But they don't do that anymore. So, there's less and less places you can go to, but absolutely, I will.
And our other, certainly AYFS. I don't know about the library. Maybe AYFS would take a few for like resources.
Right. They don't need 500.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it'd be wonderful if they did.
Sally would be out of the pack.
But the other issue is, is that our program is now old.
Yeah.
So.
I was thinking that with 2019.
It's, it's old comparatively. And so, any district is, any district is now, they're looking at new programs just like we just did.
Right, right.
You know?
But even that new school that's opening in the church, I mean, maybe they'd want updated information too, but like.
Maybe.
I don't know.
Maybe. They two plus two is always four.
Do you want one, Jessie?
I don't. I really don't. I'm just trying to think of people that might.
Through, through the chair, Quinn Sieg is working with, it's like education borders or breaking borders, something like that. And there's a company that's out there that's shipping everything internationally so they can use it. I mean, our equipment was, I mean, it's all nursing equipment. So, they're teaching them how to be resourceful or whatever, but they might have a parochial-style school that might, I can try to see if I can get the information.
Yeah, that'd be great.
They pay for everything. They just go, ship it, get it to this dock by this day, and they freight it.
That would be lovely. I would love to give it another purpose if it.
Because something, even though it's outdated, is better than nothing.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
There you go. We just gave you more work to do.
Thank you. I'll take that. That's.
He's like, he's like, one of the students said.
Next time you get a 20 slide presentation.
Yeah, great. All right.
All right, let me do that.
I'll make a motion to declare the surplus of Grades K to 5 Go Math textbooks, copyright 2015, and Grade 6 to 8 Big Ideas math textbooks, copyright 2019.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So, next item is business financial. Mrs. Stanek was not able to be with us this evening. So, she's provided a year-to-date budget report for the FY '25 school year dated May 28th for your review. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Any questions?
And likewise, she's provided a listing of all revolving and special funds accounts dated May 28th, 2025 for your review as well.
Through the chair, I will say that this page now makes sense to me like completely. Like, before, the way that it was written out, I don't know whether I just like boxes more, but it's like box number one, this is what it is. And it's just, it's very easy to just go, yep, 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 yeah.
I'll let her know that.
Yeah. And I'm like, oh, that makes sense. I don't know. Just me.
All right. And no actions for those two.
No. But there is on the last one that she had. So, this is again, a second reading of the Expense Reimbursement Policy DKC with just a couple of revisions. When travel by personally-owned vehicle, and then that it say, "Aligned with the Internal Revenue Service standard mileage rate." As that rate changes, we have to change too. So, you don't want to have a specific rate in there because it updates regularly.
I'll make a motion to approve the policy expense reimbursements as presented by the superintendent for the business manager.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just go?
Yeah.
All right. All right. I am, I don't like to read things typically when we're at a meeting, but I am going to read this. A letter from the superintendent. So, "To
the School Committee and the Auburn Public Schools community. It's been an interesting, challenging, and rewarding three and a half years as superintendent. Being a school superintendent was never a role I actively pursued, and yet, I am more than grateful for having been given this awesome responsibility. I believe I've done everything in my power to support the growth and safety of all of our students and staff throughout my tenure. Today, I write to let you know that I will be retiring from the Auburn Public Schools as of June 30th, 2026. I will be forever grateful to this school committee. A school district succeeds or fails based on the support of a school committee. And in my 15 years in Auburn, the committee has been a tremendous supporter of all that has taken place here. I'm exceedingly thankful to the teachers, staff, students, families, and community members of Auburn who have challenged me, certainly, supported me, and collaborated with me over the past 15 years. It will also be difficult to leave this current central office and administrative teams. While it's taken some time to build each of these teams, I honestly see them both as dream teams. I've been fortunate to harness and benefit from the expertise of all of these people, and I believe that Auburn Public Schools is better because of them. The collaboration with the Auburn Police Department, the Auburn Fire Department, the Office of Inspection Services, the Town Clerk, Town Leadership, and Auburn Youth of Family Services has truly been extraordinary. Auburn is a one-of-a-kind team, supportive, generous, collaborative, and always focused on what's best for kids. It has been a time I'll always remember fondly. But as I often say, change is good, and now it's time for me to change. I look forward to spending more time with my husband, Ed, and my family, and especially my granddaughter, Matilda. Thank you, Auburn, for all you've done for me as a principal, assistant superintendent, and superintendent, and certainly as a person. You've been there for me through some tough times and through some amazing success. I'll be forever grateful for all you've given me. Auburn's a special community, and I know Auburn will continue to grow and thrive. I'll do everything in my power to assist to the transition to a new leader of the Auburn Public Schools. And in the meantime, there's work to be done in the coming year, and I'll continue to give the Auburn Public Schools everything I have to ensure the safety and success of our students and staff. You're grateful, superintendent, and I am just that, grateful."
Okay. Well, I tried to talk you out of that.
You both know.
I was about to say boo. Like, I do not accept.
But thank you.
Thank you. Certainly appreciate all you've done, and I understand, you know, where you're coming from. So, yeah.
Any comments or?
Totally whack. No cap.
I think we know what the best is, so we now need to strive to find someone else who will fill your shoes.
Thank you.
I nominate Megan McCrillis to be the search committee chair and leader.
I thought you were going to say, "Supreme," like, I am not.
I, I know you're not volunteering. I'm voluntolding you.
I think clearly, yeah, as a committee, we're going to have some work to do now. And Meg and I have been down this road a few times already. But before we move on to that, it's certainly, thank you for all you've done. That was a beautiful letter. Sad, very sad. We've been through a lot together.
We have.
Yeah.
We have.
And I will be, help, I will help run that retirement party. So, yeah.
So fun. I just want to say thank you. You see districts across the state that don't have folks like you. And it makes this work, work that is very hard, so much more difficult. Sometimes, I think, for the sake of making it difficult. And that's one thing none of you have ever done, and the, the prior committees have never made it difficult for the sake of making it difficult, right? It's not, there hasn't been challenge and discussion and all of that. But it, it was not about the person. It was about looking out for kids, and that's what's remarkable about Auburn. So, I appreciate that.
Okay. Well, it is with great disdain that I say we need to, we need a motion to accept this.
I'll make a motion to accept the.
Resign, oh, sorry. I do have.
Okay. Accept the resignation of Dr. Beth Chamberlain.
Retirement, retirement.
Retirement. Sorry, retirement. Oh, my gosh.
I tried to say that, but I wasn't sure if it had to be.
Sorry.
Retirement of Dr. Beth Chamberlain as of June 30th, 2026.
A second. Can we just say no?
Resignation.
I know. What happened?
Yeah, can we?
All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
I swear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Under duress.
Under duress. Oh, my gosh.
We love you, Jessie.
I knew you were resigning.
I know. I didn't, but wait a minute.
Your retirement. I'm sorry. I've been doing this out, off the cuff, like, through this meeting. Oh, my God. Now I'm sweating buckets. Oh, my word. I'm so sorry. You're not resigning. Okay, so.
It's good. It's all good.
Man, did you get that, like, the clear cut?
Retirement.
Retirement.
So, just right, resignation, retirement, resignation, retirement. I mean, it might change tomorrow. We don't know.
Oh, I hope you do change your mind tomorrow, but we'll see.
We'll see.
All right. Well, our next step is, as a committee, we do need to create a hiring search committee with two school committee members on it, as well as various stakeholders from the community, which.
I would definitely like to chair that.
So, all right.
I feel like you guys have been down that road.
Yeah.
So, we trust your judgment.
Few times.
Are we okay with this?
Make a motion to trust their judgment.
I think it should be the chair and vice chair.
Agree. Okay.
Put that in the job description next time.
If at any point you need someone else to step in, I'd be happy to, but.
Yeah. And I think down the road, there's many part, we've already talked a little bit about it. There'll be many parts of this process that I think we can all, not as a committee do, but maybe, you know, some listening sessions, maybe we can like split it up a little, so everyone kind of has involvement. You know? And then, of course, that final interview would be all of us involved.
Yeah, I think you guys should spearhead it as the chair and vice chair.
And we were here to be your sounding board, should it require.
We will give you updates as well, yes.
I still think we should have sent down.
So, we need a motion on that?
Yeah. I don't dare give you my motion.
I don't think I'm saying.
Give it to me.
Yeah.
Which, the bottom one?
I don't know if it's on there.
Which one? Which one?
Create a hiring search committee.
I make a motion to create a hiring search committee with the following two school committee members, Jesse and Megan, as well as various stakeholders from the community.
Second.